Twenty four regular Pembroke School Committee meeting to order. Would you rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we do have a visitor. Just to be clear, this meeting is being recorded initially. We said it was not going to be. There are some requirements on the recording. You have to stay within fifteen feet. Communication. So we have consideration of naming a school liaison to the Pembroke High School Student Advisory Group.
So for the first time in forever, we've actually correctly elected a student representative to the school committee. So the bylaw or the law that the statute that governs that also says that the full group, so five students were elected to the board at the school. They elect one representative to come to your meetings. But the statute does say that the school committee will meet with the full group once a month. I think scheduling for you all to do that would be quite difficult. It might make sense for you all to delegate a liaison to do that. So they can meet. I want to just clarify, the group actually has six. There's an alternate that will be attending, but only voting if there is an issue.
What kind of things do they, would they vote on?
I have no idea.
Okay. Well, I'd love to do it, but I know others might do so. Or not.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would do it. But I'm happy to, I'll do whatever.
So I just want to understand, so the, we would just have, the person wouldn't come to our meeting?
No, no, no. So the, the student rep would come to all of your meetings like we've had in the past.
Okay.
But the full group of five that was elected by the student body has an opportunity to meet with the school committee once a month.
Got it, got it.
So I'm assuming the liaison would bring any?
Yeah, so anything that came out of the group would come through the student rep, similar to kind of where we landed at the end of last year, there'd be a report from the student rep. And then they'd share the things that they were talking about at the high school or questions or concerns.
Right, right. I would love to do that as well. So I don't know. You know, whatever.
If we all three did it, would we have to make it public?
Yeah, it's not a public meeting. You guys can take turns. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I mean.
That might be a good way to do it.
Could that give everybody a chance to, want to do it too?
I, I think me being available in the middle of the day is almost impossible. And we, I would set myself up for failure.
Would we do it? Would it be during like Titan Time or something?
No, so Titan Time's only gonna need thirty minutes.
Okay.
But after school for me, it's almost impossible. So I'd love to do it, but yeah.
Maybe we could do it by like, depending on how many people, like if we have the us three, we could do it by, I don't know, semester or like the month of?
Quarter.
By quarter, yeah.
So it's only once a month that you're meeting with them. So they're anxious to meet you for November. So whoever wants November, please feel free.
So why?
I would do vote November.
You would do November?
Yeah. So after like a month is over.
So why don't? No, why don't, I mean, you guys really all want to, look, I think the more of us that students can see, the better.
Totally.
To be quite honest with you.
Yeah.
So I think if the three of you want to, want to do it, just make sure there's only one of you going at a time.
Can we nominate David to do it too?
Well, can't we just two, two at a time? Because then it's not a quorum. It's.
Yeah, but if you're gonna be discussing things with them that you'd be bringing back to the committee.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I would really just do one. I'll leave it to you guys to figure out how you ultimately want to do it. But I think that's, I think it's totally reasonable.
So can we pick, can they pick like a date that it's always the Thursday, Wednesday? And then we just whoever can make it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that'd probably make it the easiest.
We can even just make a schedule.
Well, we, yeah, it would probably be easiest to have it be like, and then between the three of us.
I'll let you guys figure out the administrative details.
I will get the info from the kids and send it out. You guys can pick it once.
So we do have bills circulating. Can I get a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes of October first, 2024 as presented?
Second.
So motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, Natalie. The superintendent's report.
So before we get to the much anticipated achievement report in your packet somewhere, I sent you a letter from Habimach about surplus library materials. So you all know Kate Newgin, our Stream Para. She did a wonderful job reading this library. I think it was about a year and a half ago at this point. And she has brought her skills over to Habimach because that's where she is for her trimester this year delivering stream. So she has put together the list of surplus library materials. She followed school community policy in regards to reading. I did not print out the list because it is eight hundred and seven pages, but I did include it electronically for you all.
It was in there?
I think so, yeah.
I don't, I don't remember.
Unless it was that, that was the one, but that was policies, I think.
I don't think it was.
You know, she followed your policy.
Given it is eight hundred pages, we regularly get surplus materials. They're usually things like, I saw a textbook from nineteen eighty-six, which was a great year, by the way. It's when I graduated from high school. I know you weren't born yet. It's been, it's been.
Yeah, not much.
Anyway, there's usually things that are quite old that cannot be sold, cannot be resold. So I would ask that we, we approve the surplus Habimach library materials.
Do they just get recycled?
Nope. So we offer them to anyone that would like them.
And how do we offer them?
We go to the library. We go to the Council on Aging. We reach out to those. Unfortunately, a lot of the things that we are reading were donated to us when the center preschool closed, when various other people ended their child's library at home and gave them to us. So they'll send out a note that just says that we have.
But the families like, oh, students don't have an opportunity to like?
No.
Because that's not how, like, they're not folks, but nobody would want, but nobody would want them.
No, they're like, I'm sure somebody wants them. If we don't get somebody to take them, then we do recycle them.
Well, that's what I'm just wondering if there's like a homeschool family that would, I don't know what they, I didn't see the list. So I'm just wondering if we offer them.
So that's not the level that we've offered before. We've done the Appalachia Service Project. We've done some large organizations.
No, I get it.
It's an administrative burden.
Well, that's why I was just like, fire sale, come, take a look or go.
If there's a homeschool family listening to this recording that would like to take a look at the books we're about to access, please reach out and have them to share.
No, seriously, by all means. So can I get a motion to accept the surplus Habimach library materials as presented?
So.
Some motion by Katrina, seconded by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, it's unanimous, Natalie. Achievement report.
I just want you all to know, this feels really thick.
This is really thick. Oh, my God.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Beth, and she's skillfully gonna walk you through this.
Keep in mind we're forty-five minutes late.
I'm hyper aware of that.
We'll also post these slides to the website so that folks can look at them.
And I think just before I even begin, I just want to preface it by saying there's an awful lot of material packed into these pages. And certainly we can follow up at the next meeting if there's something that comes to mind because sometimes you can go down a rabbit hole pretty easily with these numbers at these days. And then the other thing I would just, just like to caution everybody to remember is that this is a test that's given over the course of two days perhaps for each discipline. It is indicative of, I really believe in grades three to eight. It's more diagnostic, it's to help us, to help kids, to figure out where they're doing well, where we need to adjust, where we need to make investments. So I, you know, I always want to preface this material. The tests change year to year, as do the students. So we can try to make this an exact science, but it's, it's not. It has a lot to do with individuals and how different individuals perform and also how certain people interact with curriculum or whatever is happening in that particular title, that student on that day when they have to sit down and answer that problem. So I just, sometimes, you know, it can be a little bit, we could take it to a level that it's, it's not really intended to do. It's really meant for us to use it as three to eight, particularly looking at curriculum and instruction, how we can do better, how, how we can, where we're doing well and look where we can want to improve. And then obviously for grades nine and ten, it's our competency determination. So it does, and you will see in the numbers, you will see exactly that the students get that. So there is definitely a developmental trend to the scores as well. I would be remiss just not to point out that this report comes together with a number of different people. Gwen Chapman, Dr. Galligan, Sebese, Jonathan Shapiro and Melinda Soloboda spent hours working with the data, looking at, looking at it for trends, working with teachers, looking at our curriculum materials to make sure that those curriculum materials are meeting the needs of our students. And that if there's something better out there, then what we should be exploring it. So they are a huge piece of pulling this material together. For those of you who have not lived the life of MCAS in its entirety, MCAS started for base grade eight in twenty seventeen. It started at the high school for, for students in math in ELA in twenty nineteen, twenty ten, twenty twenty, they were tested or administered, twenty twenty-one. They took a half a test. So you can see when we're starting to talk about data that some of the data, the data points are a little bit sketchy just based almost happening globally here, what was happening in terms of how the test was either designed or administered that year. When you look at the SAT data, you'll see that the twenty twenty scores were really amazing. While those tests were delivered online in people's houses. There's just a lot that goes into standardized testing. So just keep that in mind. This is the document that goes amongst families. It is full of information. It gives you information about your child's progress. It gives you information about the school where they tested, the district, and then the state. It's a very useful tool. And again, I think it's a great starting place for conversations with, with teachers about where, where your student is achieving and where you would like them to focus in the future. That's usually a collaborative conversation that you would be having in confidence. There's been a lot of talk this year about the competency determination and what that means. It did change for the class of twenty twenty-six, which is the class that just sat for MCAS in the spring of twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-two, right after the pandemic ended, the Department of Education decided to change the scoring and increase the level to a four eighty-six for the class of twenty twenty-six. So in order to completely meet the competency determination for a graduation diploma in the state of Massachusetts, you have to score four eighty-six. However, you can score a four seventy, which is in a partially meeting range, as long as you have what is called an educational proficiency plan. That educational proficiency plan is something that we, by virtue of the curriculum that we have here and the requirements that we have for four years of math, obviously four years of English, we tend to meet that plan with students. So many students meet the four seventy and with an EPP are well on their ready graduating. So just in case you're hearing about those changes for the CD, that's, that's, those were the numbers that changed. So what does that actually mean? On the grade ten test, there are fifty-one questions for the class of twenty-one. To get to four seventy, they had to get twenty of the fifty-one correct. Just sort of give you that to give you an idea. That is not uncommon for how standardized tests are built. That is, that is very consistent with how you would rate SATs or AP exams or ACTs, that, that kind of, that number, the graduation of those numbers and the percentages are very consistent. I just want, sometimes I think some, there's some confusion about how many questions? What are they doing? How often? It does test through tenth grade. So tenth grade, traditionally our students are finishing geometry. Some of them are taking Algebra II at that time. So this class for math is through geometry. And for ELA, our tenth graders, they take world language, I mean, I'm sorry, world literature and different genres of writing in the ninth grade. So there's two different things that are tested in the ninth and tenth grade.
So just to clarify, it went from like twelve to twenty, from twenty twenty-five, like the raw score?
Correct.
And then, oh, and that's with the four EPP level, I understand. So that's.
That's the four seventy.
Got it.
To hit the four seventy, yes.
The current seniors and the current juniors, right?
So that's the, correct, the current seniors and the current juniors, yeah.
Got it.
Our grade ten ELA MCAS is strong. What we, what you see here is sometimes you're gonna see me comparing it to twenty nineteen. That's considered a good comparison point because we get a little bit away from the punkiness of the pandemic. However, to keep in mind that that was also still the first year of that test. So it, it's a little bit complicated. It was the first year for the high school that took next generation testing. Prior to that, they were taking what was called legacy tests.
Oh.
So again, a new tool in twenty nineteen, it's not so new anymore. Just a quick note, ELA scores across the nation have been declining. Reading and writing skills are not as high as they have been in the past. And that is true for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well. For me, that just seems so counterintuitive. But I guess when you start to think about literacy and when we look at our deficits and where our students have scored low, we do see deficits in vocabulary and in writing. So students don't read as much as they used to read. There's a lot of workarounds around reading. So there's, you know, audio, there's, there's notes, there's all kinds of ways. There's AI for you to glean the information that you need. And I'm not sure that students are reading the way that they used to.
Some of this though, phenomena, and I don't know, but of keeping kids out of the classroom for as long as we did during the pandemic. I mean, because these kids were actually in critical learning years when, when they were at home.
Six and seven grade.
Yeah?
Yeah. And vocabulary, that feels like.
Enormous.
That being around, being exposed to different types of tests. And then like writing, you might not have done as much writing when you were at home. I mean, yeah, we're just conjecturing, but yes, I agree.
I mean, there's a million, there's a million different reasons that it could be, right? There's a lot of maybes and there's, you just can't say because, right? We don't know because exactly, but we have a lot of ideas about why this is happening nationally, why it's happening. It's just, it's not a phenomenon here. It's not a phenomenon in Massachusetts. It's a phenomenon.
And that's why I asked the question because it is a national, if it's a national trend, there's only one thing that actually happened, you know?
Right. And just from my perspective, again, and this is just maybe, it's just counterintuitive to me because the one thing that you could have kept doing during the pandemic is reading and writing.
It's a precipitous.
Right? So it's just, it was different. It's just, for me, that was a little bit, I didn't ever anticipate such a decline. I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy, we would have seen bigger declines in math than we did normally, so.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Just for me, maybe, I'm not thinking of it clearly, but it's just counterintuitive. So we are right where we were in twenty nineteen with math. In the data, not necessarily in tonight's data, but we also have a number of very strong classes, which is another thing that happens, you know, sometimes in, every now and then we have a class that's really strong. We have a very strong eighth grade in math this year and had a very strong fourth grade. So we, we tend to see some trends like that from time to time, too. These are, I just wanted you to get a sense of year over year. And what we tend to do for those of you who might be new to that is take a look at meeting expectations and exceeding, add those together, and that gives us an idea of who's meeting and exceeding expectations.
Did you change this?
I added this. No, I added it because I realized like, I didn't even include like last year's numbers. And so you're looking at twenty nineteen, but without any understanding of what happened last year. So last year, our ELA was at seventy-four. This year it is at seventy-one. That's pretty, that's pretty flat. And for math, it's, again, it's pretty much the same. So good, good work.
And when it's ninety-nine percent participation, what happened at one percent?
That could be a number of reasons, especially in grade ten. It could be a student is out ill. That tends to be the number one reason that a student is, is unable to take the test. It's very, that's considered still a very good participation rate. Obviously, we're always going for a hundred. We are, we are held accountable for offering the test to all students.
Does that percentage include like kids who might take, we might not have any kids who have an alternative assessment? But does that include that?
Yes, it does, yeah. And it includes anybody who is supposed to be tested in grade ten, whatever their test looked like.
I see, okay, got it, yeah.
Biology, the biology test is even more fine because the new or the legacy biology test only started two years ago. So that gives you a sense of where we are in biology. And I just want to take a minute and focus on the biology because. Yes, we're doing well in biology, and I really need to highlight that a little bit because the other exams in science, technology and engineering are spiraling exams that cover three to five and then six to eight. We don't do as well in most tests. And there's a reason for that, and I can explain when we get there. But I think the place that we want to look at for the win is that when our students are taking an exit end of year test in a specific subject, they are well able to, you know, master that content in most cases, so.
Yeah, compared to the state, we're like twelve points ahead.
Yes, that's a very, it's a very strong score. And you can see even later when we go to our dark scores and our Patriot scores, we're right in the mix with them.
Yeah.
Which is a very positive thing because I think sometimes if you look at the younger grades, you can be very alarmed. They shouldn't alarm you. There's reasons for why those tests are a little bit more, those scores are a little bit more difficult to pass or to.
I also think it's just important, especially since it's been recorded, to point out every year is a different cohort. Every year the test is a little bit different, right? So it, it's almost hard because it's not like it's the same cohort of kids. It's, it's a completely different group of kids. But you should get, the law of averages would say they would start to kind of coalesce together. And we're usually better too, Katrina, than the Commonwealth scores, which I would expect us to be, but.
Yeah, we're a little bit lower in a couple of places. But again, we know it, we, we know why that's happening. We know what we want to do to try to support students and, and to reflect on our, our curriculum and our instruction. Just what are, one of the perks of our MCAS test is the John and Adele Adams Scholarship Tuition Awards. That's what those recipients receive at the University of Massachusetts, Amherst, Boston, Tarket and Lowell. And that's based on scoring and exceeding expectations category on one of the tests and then in meeting expectations or exceeding in the other two. So those, usually we get, we get those notices during this month of October, and those get sent out two days.
How many?
It's usually like fifty-five or so.
Yeah, there's, there's a significant numbers.
It's a big number.
That score. I don't know, I didn't look at it yet to speak the numbers to you this year. When we look at our English Language Arts, because of the way the state reports, it's, it's reported three to eight. And then we can go back in and break out by each grade, by each school, by each subpopulation, each special population. We can do it like that. We tend to report three to eight as kind of a group and then take a look at seven and eight. Again, keeping in mind that those students are young, it's a predominantly diagnostic thing. And we are using that data to inform our instruction and our curriculum choices as much as we are to support students. Grade seven and grade eight, MCAS English Language Arts. Dr. Galligan and his team actually gave a look at all of this stuff. And we just pulled the questions. And the areas that they identified that they are continuing to work with kids are, again, the writing. There were a couple of questions on poetry that this year happened to, we did the score as well. We should have on those, on those particular questions. Again, you're kind of at the mercy of what, what's coming at you this year with this test.
This isn't good news, Hal.
No, no. That's not where we want to be, right?
Yeah, this is not good news.
That is not where we want to be. And, and we're aware of that and, you know, looking at ways to, to improve that. I think the takeaway is something happens, some magic pixie dust happens between grade eight and grade ten, right? When, when students realize that they are going to, that they.
Well, matters.
Right, but the checkmark phenomenon has always been, right? Elementary, middle school, high school, that's.
Always, always.
It has always been that way.
But this was a bigger, yeah, this is a bigger dip than.
And this is, again, just to remind you, this is typical across the Commonwealth right now. This is lower than we ever want to see, but it's also typical with the, across the Commonwealth.
Do, do we think that it has anything to do with the way the test was designed specifically last year?
I don't, I don't. But I think the standards are broad. They also didn't release any of the questions, grades three to eight this year. So we don't really know for sure. So we kind of know what the standard was that was tested, but we don't know how it was actually raised. They have released questions in the past that they didn't publish here.
Is there a reason for that?
I think it's just about test integrity. There's only so many times you can keep releasing the questions without.
Before you know what's coming.
Yeah, where everybody knows what's gonna be on the test.
It's hard to get your turn.
And that's a little bit too like, you know, throwing a dart as well with the questions. You can pick a standard and you can ask a question in that standard forty different ways, right? So.
And I'm curious, so I was reading, when I was reading about MCAS and stuff, that they're scored, it's human read and scored, right? So there's also.
There's both, human read and.
So, but there, there could be a difference between me reading one, you read, like in the score, because the scoring, it's not.
They also do, they also do automated scoring now, too. So there's, there's both that they do. There is, there are groups that sit and.
Like, could this year's have been a harder set of human reading, like, or was twenty nineteen still on the computer? Like, are kids needing a back to pencil and paper test? Like, I'm wondering, was it still, was it computerized?
Yes, well, it's always been computerized, yeah.
So it wasn't, there wasn't?
It's not that, no.
They probably use a rubric, I would imagine.
There is a rubric, yeah, that they use.
And that has been consistent?
Yes. But if you remember, last year we added two tools to our toolkit, noticing that G's scores were, were not as strong as we want them to be. We added No Read Inc., which is, Allison loves this program. But it is a strong program in regards to developing some of the skills that we're seeing as weaknesses for our students particularly.
Is it strong on paper and by use of student fidelity? I'm just wondering, like, is there one that students might like better, might be able to learn from better?
So there's many products out there, and we have explored different types of products. We have used IXL. We've used, the younger grades we use already. IXL is designed specifically to be more focused on writing, which has been an area of concern. So there are probably others out there as well, but this is one of the first ones that we've adopted for the seven to twelve and actually six to twelve, twelve group.
Is there a plan to reassess, like, to look at what programs are available based on the data to decide if like, there is a better option?
Yep. I know a lot of kids would be like, this sucks, no matter which program, what program, you know? I don't want to do this, I'd do something else.
And UCLA is another, another tool that we're using as well, which is allows teachers to differentiate the reading level. Yeah, so that kids can access content, which is a big issue as well. Just learning the words and understanding the content is a, is a huge, not even the subject specifically, but just sort of learning something else and getting the vocabulary that might be associated with a story or something about the Victorian era, you know, things that you wouldn't necessarily think, oh, let's teach kids about Victorian vocabulary.
Because I'm just wondering, like, and this is just the way I think that, like, okay, so the kids in twenty nineteen were taking this. They didn't have Chromebooks in elementary school, for the most part, right? The kids now are on Chromebooks and aren't having physical papers nearly as much. It's, and they're, you know, I don't know, you know, like the No Read Inc. program, what would, what were we doing? Was it a paper-based workbook?
Yes.
What has been around for two million years? You know, like, that's, right?
So I would say in the younger grades, there was probably more paper and pencil work happening, but there was also.
Because I just think like the way, you know, your brain learns. Like, the way your brain learns by, you know, like, the writing, muscle memory, you know, I mean. And I complained about this before, like, kids aren't being taught even how to type correctly.
So one of the.
It's like, it's all, I think there's just a, it's.
It's all, it's, that's why it's hard to tease out the, because of, right? So there's so many different factors that are happening at this point.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a concern and it's not something that we're ignoring. It's something that we're exploring. Mathematics, district-wide, fifty-nine, it's still well above the state. Three to eight math, twenty twenty-four, twenty nineteen, pretty, pretty flat, pretty good, actually. I mean, that's the, that's our, something very good here in grade eight. Our ME plus for grade eight math was at seventy-one percent, which was the top of the Patriot League, the top of our dark schools. Remarkable because the ELA and science scores were not strong, but the math was so strong. And there was no, you know, prior indicators. For example, in grade seven, they didn't test over the top on math and really poorly. So it just, they also, I want, I just want to, you know, our eighth graders took four tests last year. They're also taking a civics test, which we won't have reportable data for this kind of an environment until next year. But, you know, four tests is a lot of tests, so they're eighth graders and.
Are there more, like, more accelerated classes? Like math, have they been, like, are you guys adding or they, have they been?
They're about consistent.
Okay. So it's not like more kids are taking accelerated math or anything like that? The numbers are just.
No, we did, I mean, last year's eighth grade did self-identify, quite a few of those students did self-identify to accelerate over the summer, which is awesome. I mean, that was.
Some going from seventh into accelerated eighth.
No, going from eighth to ninth grade, they chose to take a summer course over the summer to accelerate their learning so that they can join a geometry class at the school.
Oh, okay. And you said that was the group that, that the fourth and eighth graders that were really high performing for math overall?
They, they did well in the math scores, yeah. I mean, we have like, there's many pockets of achievement throughout there that, you know, we're not going to drill down to every grade at every school and what have you. But there were a lot of, a lot of positive motivation into it. Again, five through eight, science, technology and engineering, not where we want to be, right? That's not. That's not, not where we expect to be, district-wide. Again, just a reminder that this test is a three-year spiraling test and that's quite a bit for our students to be pulling together at the end of their, their fifth grade experience, but something that we're looking at. The test is also changing, so the test is changing from a traditional sort of short, short answer circuit response and multiple choice test and they're adding a simulated response into that test, which aligns more with the way science is being taught now, which is much more an age-based type of teaching. So in our open-site ed curriculum, which is grades six through eight, students begin with a phenomenon and then they act as scientists to solve and they, they have six units each year. But we've been implementing open-site ed over the past three to four years in those grades. So they have not had all, they didn't have all six units in grade six. They had other science as well as the units that we're getting for open-site ed, but it's been a blended, a blended effort in those grades. So we're expecting that with the shift in the test and with the alignment to, to the way that we are teaching, that that will, that will start to show up in student performance.
Are you seeing a difference between the three schools or is it pretty consistent?
There's definitely differences in the three schools, for sure. But the practices that we're, you know, the materials that we're using, the strategies that we're using are, are consistent. And I think that especially having Melinda as the content supervisor at elementary, we have another, you know, another set of hands to help the principals and the assistant principals with that work, which is very, very complicated when you have that many grades in the school, trying to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. So I see that only getting stronger and stronger. We've talked at this table about this before, too, another, another way that you could approach it, it's a huge thing, but grade band schools are another way that you make that experience equitable and consistent across, across the district. But there's also many positive things about the neighborhood schools. Everybody else, that. Again, we know that our curriculum was not completely aligned as the students were taking this test and preparing or getting ready for this test as we're implementing a new curriculum. So we're hopeful that in the spring, the interactive element of that, that test will start to see some, some payoff for this curriculum.
This is frightening.
Yes.
So is this the, the test not keeping up with the curriculum? Like, where it's like, because Open Site is like a.
It's both. It's, it's, the curriculum started moving to a much more hands-on, inquiry-based method of instruction. But the test isn't that kind of a test. The test is a more traditional test, like, you know, what does a cell, there's the definition. Whereas now they'd say, well, what, what do cells do? Why do you use cells? What are, why are cells important to plant life or to human life? You know, so it's a little bit, it's just a different perspective. What we're hearing from the state level is that's the direction that the test is going in and that's the direction that we decided to go in because of what we were hearing. We were hearing that that was where they were going, so we didn't want to adopt a curriculum that two years later was not going to meet the needs of our students in terms of their assessment. So we have this gap right now and we're.
You're ahead of the game.
We hope.
Sometimes destiny takes a while.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I just want to take the, one of the takeaways from this is that a lot of what goes into these tests now are science practices and our students in those areas are scoring very well with the science practices, which is what we want kids to be excited about science and to want to discover things and to do the hands-on work so that when they get to the high school level and they're accessing biology and chemistry and physics, they have that inquiry-based thinking and they're also able to, along with the content as well, which they are able to do with the biology. So again, just want to work that out. So we get all kinds of data from the state. This is an item analysis for grade eight ELA. You, what you can do is click on, in some years, you can click on those questions and find out what the question was and then see, like, oh, how did we do on that? At least you can tell what the standard is and what standard we need to be paying attention to based on the data that we're getting. We take a deeper dive into demographics, this is a more high-level one, but we would take a look, for example, at high-need students in grade four. How are, how did our high-need students do at Bryantville? How did they do at Hoblock? How did they do at North? Was there one group that did better than the others? Did they do anything different? Was there something that they, they, you know, did they have some secret sauce? What, you know, what's going on and how are, and how are they, how are they doing? And we do this with many of our special populations, so high-need students, students with disabilities and low income, which comprises basic capabilities in our English, in our English language learners. And then we look, as Patrick was saying before, that's like a cohort, cohort group. We take a look at the class of twenty twenty-five and where they were. So they were in, like, was that like twenty sixteen, grade three, those were part exams? Twenty sixteen and twenty sixteen was a part exam, twenty seventeen was an NCAS exam. The exam, you know, these kids have taken lots of different types of exams over the past few years.
And we no longer have to show minimum yearly progress or whatever it used to be?
No, you do.
You do?
You do, it's a different accountability system. So No Child Left Behind was replaced by Every Student Six Needs Act, which is, gave a little bit more autonomy to the states, but I'll get into that later, but yes, you do have to show progress, yeah. So how do we use the data? We look at it with other towns, too. We all belong to what's called lighthouse groups, where we get together with other towns and we, we talk to those, to those leaders and, and think about what they're doing and check our thinking against theirs, so.
I'd love to see this slide with the price per pupil, of how the spent, like, the price.
I agree with that.
To see if there's, like, if this could be, is there a funding side of some of this?
Usually it doesn't correlate.
It's not going to tell that story, right? So I can tell you just off the bat, Hanover, Marchfield, Silverlake, they, they're right where we are at, if not a little bit less. Obviously, the Hangums and the Duxberrys of the world spend more per pupil, North Quincy does not.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm curious to see if it.
We can put it together.
Matches or not.
Should be in Plymouth.
Yeah. Because whether some of them are getting special funding.
These are our district-like schools, so these are schools that are more like us. Again, they don't have released them yet for twenty twenty-four, so I have to use last year's, the last, I use the last list that they released. So that gives us a better idea of how we are performing against some of the schools that are considered more like us than the Patriot League. The Patriot League is interesting because those are our neighborhood towns, you know, the areas that we know, but these are the towns that we have been identified by the state as being most like. So Patrick, to your question, we are still navigating an accountability system that's relatively, it's a little bit heavy on math, not on mathematics, but we get two components. We get scored in the normative components and we get a criterion, a normative component which scores us against other schools and then we get a criterion reference score. So what the state does is takes our score for tenth grade ELA in twenty twenty-three and then they set a number for what we should score in twenty twenty-four. And based on how we do, we either get zero points, one point, two point, three points or four points. And then we get, that all gets added up. Sixty percent of our score comes from this year, forty percent of our score comes from last year and that gives us a target, our target score. And what that does, that criterion reference score, gives us an idea of how we're doing against our own targets.
Yeah.
The idea being the state, when the state developed this, they wanted to make sure that if you are a strong school, you're not just sitting on your laurels and saying, okay, well, we're done. They want you to keep, to continue to push, push, push. And then the normative component rates you against other schools that are like you or similar populations.
So it's like a, kind of like a growth, they include like a growth score?
They include growth, they include, at the high school level, they include graduation. They also include the difficulty of your courses if you're taking an advanced course. One thing Pembroke did very well in this year, which has not always been the case, but in all of our schools, we exceeded expectations for attendance, which is great. So that's a really positive thing. That's a big obstacle, obviously, to learning gaps when kids aren't showing up. So that's a great thing that we are getting, we're getting some.
It's a big accomplishment for the high school.
Yeah, it's a big accomplishment for a lot, a lot of our learners, it's a good, it's a good thing. So when the state sets your number, when you exceed your target, you get four, blah, blah, blah. If you, if you decline, you get a zero. Now, there's a part of me that says, wouldn't it be nice to just leave it, like, for one year, like, can you get back? But they're constantly pushing you to, to do better, which is obviously greatly, 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 so. That gives you a sense of.
Our target was sixty-six and we got sixty-four, as I'm reading?
Where are you?
I hear that we, in twenty twenty-four, accumulated.
Yeah.
No, when you add up, when you add up, yeah, so when, when you look at all the numbers on the right there, Allison, all the numbers on the right will add up to, in twenty twenty-three, they added up to sixty-one percent. You have to balance all students with your lowest performing twenty-five percent of students. So you are getting actually scored on so many different things. If you, it's all public, it's all on the Desi website, it's very interesting. But you can, yeah, you can go right into that profile and you can see, for example, high-need students and for each of our grade levels and how they scored, not just achievement-wise, but also growth. So that's all baked into that equation. And then it's averaged, that you're, well, not, well, between the forty percent and sixty percent for twenty-three and twenty-four is where you get. What we ended up with for the high school was sixty-four percent. We're getting sixty-four percent of our students.
Nice.
Yeah. And then this gives you a sense of the accountability percentile is in the orange and that tells you how we're doing against other schools like us. So that's just, those are just two ways that the state takes a look at the performance that we turn in our NCAS, like, how our performance was in the spring and how we match up against other schools like us and against ourselves. It's a lot.
So you want it to be the orange, to be higher than the blue?
You want the orange to be high. Yeah, high, 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 yeah.
So I guess, I know that there's obviously some differences. There are difference, a major difference in the student populations between the schools. I know at Bryantville there is maybe potentially more students who have lower economics, socioeconomic.
There are some, I'm not sure that there's significant differences, but there are definitely differences in the demographics of the schools. Also, Hoblock has our special programs, so there's, you know, there's differences everywhere.
Yeah.
So for example, PHS was, I think, at seventy-three percent in terms of their accountability percentile. They're doing better than seventy-three percent of schools like them. So take a look at North, North is, I think, at seven, a little bit over seventy-five.
Yeah, looks like seventy.
So they, I mean, there's some definitely, there's some definitely strong performances happening in these schools.
And I think that's even more of a case to have the content supervisor, right, to be able to kind of norm across some of these things.
Yeah. I would say yes, and I think that it's really, it's really helpful to have lots of sets of eyes on this and in the different disciplines, trying to figure out what, what is happening. But to Patrick's point at the beginning, it's different kids, it's a different test. You can, you can spend lots and lots of time on that and then surprise.
Yeah, you might have missed something, yeah.
So as I already mentioned, there's going to be changes in the grade five and grade eight science, technology and engineering tests, grade eight, seventh civics, so we'll finally get some data from that grade eight civics test next year. Where are we focused? Literacy, 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 right? We have, obviously, we are, want to continue to push the writing, especially the narrative writing in grades three through six. In mathematics, we are transferring a lot of our benchmark exams to a program, an online program, so kids are even more familiar with taking some of those tests and getting some of that work done. And our open-site ed implementation will finally be complete, six to eight, at the end of the spring, with teachers who have learned a, you know, hugely different pedagogy and different units than they had been teaching before, so. There are PLCs for teachers in all of these areas for them to be reflective and thinking about the work that students are doing and how they can best support them and how they can adapt curriculum to the needs of our students. AP these scores, okay. So the AP experience at high school continues to be a very inclusive experience. We have strong, strong numbers, strong percentages. We won an award from the AP, a recognition award for our participation. The culture at the high school is definitely one where people are encouraged to take those exams. We want to create barriers for students to take the exams. We use AP potential to try to find more students to take the exams. So there is a lot of positive impact regard in terms of our AP participation.
Yeah, that's, if you don't mind, right, I just, after this, you won't be here to be able to say it. There's been a lot of discussion in the past about whether or not there should be requirements to take an AP course. We have a longstanding philosophy and tradition here in Pembroke of allowing any kid to take an AP course. It is really well documented that a kid who takes an AP course does much better when they get to college and university. It also allows a kid, a kid to be able to strive for something, strive for, for excellence and sometimes kids really surprise themselves, right? It's not having that barrier to entering the AP class, I really believe, is one of our core fundamental philosophies that we have to hold on to here in Pembroke.
Yeah, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
And really make that clear. I mean, I think the kids know it, but talking with parents, they don't always know that, you know? Tell, I don't know, and then make your, I mentioned that, get excited.
Yeah. Do we have a cap at all about, I just know, like, I'm thinking back to, like, you know, when, when I was at Pembroke High School and there was, like, you know, my friends taking lots of AP classes at one time. So is there a limit to the AP classes in terms of how many you can take at one time? Or like, counseling that goes along with the?
Yeah, counseling.
Also scheduling.
I know that there's guidance counselors, but I'm just wondering, like, what's the balance?
Right, we talked about trying to implement something like that and it's so specific to each student. Like, we do have some students that can handle six AP classes and so why would we not allow them to do that? But I think the guidance department does a really good job of counseling students based on their past performance. So if you've never taken an AP, it's probably not great to be taking four.
Right.
So you might want to, like, start slow, take one, maybe take two and.
They do, I will say that from just my own experience, right, with my kids, they do really a job in sitting them down and saying, look, you might be able to handle it, but remember, you also want to do this and this and this, right? And so they don't just look at the academic component, they look at the extracurricular component, they look at work components and, and they're able to, I think, give pretty good guidance. And then, you know, sometimes they'll even say, well, start here and you can always go down, right? Like, if it's just too much, those first couple weeks, consider, you know, going down to an honors class or something like that.
Work sheet, the guidance counselor, using with students to, and trying to explain to students that, you know, homework in an AP class is, is very different than homework even in an honors class. The, the level of commitment and individual sort of drive has, has to be there. Your interest really has to be there because it's, it's complex and they're moving fast, right? They're doing a college, they're doing a college course.
And there's summer work.
And there's.
Because we are on the wrong schedule for AP.
Again, you have, just as we were saying, there are some schoolwork groups that are taking five and lower exams, those are our student frequent scholars of distinction. Last year there were fourteen of those students and eighteen with at least three or higher or four or more.
Excuse me, thank you.
This is really, this is amazing that we have students performing at this.
And this is just the graduating class or is it the whole school?
That's the graduating.
Just class of twenty-four.
Kill it.
Yeah, it's amazing.
AP, AP excellence was also a great, a great, a great number in the back of your head to keep in mind, but we have forty-seven percent of our students.
Yes.
Yes, of our students who are earning at least one qualifying score. So that's nice, right, to perform well and maybe you're going to take that class again, but you're going to take that class with a lot more confidence and a lot more background knowledge. Or maybe your school's going to give you credit for that course. So either way, it's a, it's a positive experience, you can't really go wrong. And it's a nationally recognized curriculum. So people are, you know, it's an apples-to-apples kind of thing, whereas oftentimes, it's hard for a college or university to. it's hard for a college or university to know what your algebra class is like or your calculus class is like, but they know what AP calculus is like.
Right.
I I will say, there's, there's also an economic component to this. You know, I I had a daughter who took one course over the summer. And as a result, because of her AP courses in that course, graduated an entire year early. So there's an entire year of undergrad tuition she didn't have to pay.
Yeah, I see it same, I see it my son too. From, I'm holding credit from my AP courses.
Yeah, which is great. I I always just want to caution, it's so dependent on the school.
No, it is, no, no, it is. Not all schools can do it, but.
They want the money.
But the more competitive it gets, you know, whatever you think a student, a tuition dollar, the more these are starting to come back.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, more testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
AP potential is a tool that's been used that is based off our tenth and eleventh graders' performance on the APCT. Our tenth and eleventh graders happen to be taking that next week, which is a joy. But that tool allows us to correlate student performance on that test with where they might score three or more on an AP test. So when we look at actual, so there's not one for AP three, sorry, in design. So these are like some specific classes, I just wanted to give you a sense of how some students were doing. But let's go to the next one. So, for example, AP chemistry, this happens through the classroom a lot. Students who are identified make potential to do well, they, you know, thirty-two students were identified as having potential to score three or better. Three students opted into the class who did not have potential, and those three students also qualified. That is an extremely high rate of qualifying for chemistry.
Really high.
Very difficult course for AP. So that is a real credit to the, to the instruction and to the devotion of the kids and the commitment of the kids.
Didn't hit a three or higher.
Right.
Yeah, and probably math, right? That's like some of the benefits for chemistry.
Correct.
Yeah. So those math teachers.
Everybody, it's a really effort, and I will say the culture around AP is very positive in terms of including and helping kids and pushing kids. AP language and composition, one of the things I just want to point to out in this, even though there's a bit of a decline there, we had twenty-six more students who took the class. So that's, that's a positive thing. This is considered one of those classes that, in the early days of AP, when we were first adopting these programs, we were really encouraged to push this as a class that every student would benefit from. Math students would benefit from it, science students would benefit for it, because it covers such a wide range of skills, rhetoric, classes, meetings, things like.
Could be a lot in grade one, or just the fall three.
That's a lot of communication, yeah.
But this also is indicative of a trend we talked about earlier, right, with writing and composition being more of a struggle. So you you're actually seeing, especially with us, that there's a downward trend even on the state line back. You know, you are seeing a pretty significant trend down, it's real.
It's real, and, you know, it's.
But even for those nineteen kids that did not qualify, they're better off.
I a hundred percent agree.
I mean, they just are.
Right.
AP Spanish, they don't have a PSAT, obviously, that helps poorly, but they have had a very high pass rate for a long time.
To your side.
That's something to celebrate and someone could, you know, obviously, to commend our students and teacher for the work that we've done there. AP statistics, I thought this was particularly interesting. All of the students who were identified passed, which is, you know, kind of cool, and a great majority of students who are not identified passed. So I'm just throwing those in hammering that just to, to, so that we're realizing that we're not creating a barrier for those kids that are not identified.
So when you say that they are not identified, those are the kids that asked to take the class?
Yeah.
Right, or their their PSATs didn't necessarily correlate. So their their teacher might have said to them, you could do it, but they didn't have, they didn't show up on that potential report.
Based on their PSATs.
Based on their PSATs, right, right. AP US, our next steps in terms, we're exploring two things that will be coming through EDSTUB. We had talked about last year, EDSTUB, looking at the advanced placement through calculus. A few of our surrounding towns are doing it, they're reporting that it's a positive experience for students. And so we are, we're thinking of offering for our students, too, I think that would be a nice option for kids. And the advanced placement seminar, which would be in English to finance, which is a sort of a mixed lot of the manatee game writing, lots of arts and music, manatee type course. Will also be a tenth grade class.
So there could be two APs for tenth grade?
Tenth grade that that would potentially allow for, I think, even three, because you'd have a tenth grade world history, tenth grade advanced placement and a computer science class.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Nice.
Our S and T scores are relatively bad, my perspective.
Hey, you're.
Taste for a dramatic drop in the pieces, Massachusetts has never been a huge A C T. We tried very hard, our own department, that's my fault, we really were, our students, really interested in the test. And she signed up to be a proctor and she got to be a testing site and she did all those things. And we just don't seem to have the interest in here. We had other students, a couple of other schools attend, but we just don't seem to have the interest.
Repeat in eighteen.
Yeah. So that was it. I think that's, that is pretty high.
It's like nobody takes in Massachusetts, is what it comes down to.
It's a southern western school thing.
Because our students were really high, our students in Massachusetts, the Massachusetts state score is like twenty-seven, which is one of the highest scores.
Yeah, that was a good score.
And that's the average in Massachusetts, which means we have kids, obviously.
So is it, is it a lack of exposure or education that they don't know or they just?
The schools that they're applying to don't require it.
Yeah.
They require a C T.
Yeah, a lot of the northeast schools, a lot of the east coast schools.
They won't take A C T scores.
So unless you're going to, like, the southwest.
Right.
But you also have to have an A C T.
Yeah, you, well.
I think you can do one or another. I just think that S and T tends to be.
Far more common.
More widely accepted.
Just more widely accepted here, not like all of your friends that live in any other region of the United States.
It's taking.
What are you doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you taking that? That was a quick, quick one, guys, and I know that if you have more, I'd be happy to come back with.
It's really helpful.
How many AP classes do we offer?
I think seventeen, eighteen, I think sometimes AP your parents, we doesn't.
So we have the subcommittee liaison updates, the MASC delegate working group.
Yeah, so in your packet, I just provided you with the kind of overview of what Sue and Allison had worked on when they met.
So it's really just resolution one, which, when it comes down to it, doesn't matter because the vote will have already happened in the state. So if we can't agree to it, if we want to just skip it, I just would honestly say that we just don't vote on that one at the convention.
So what, when is the convention again?
Two days after election day.
So, yeah, I mean.
I would, I would say that Sue and I agreed on all of them except the first one. The first one, like I said, doesn't matter, so unless we want to take a position on it.
I I don't see any interest.
I don't know how.
I mean, I think, I don't understand, like, why it's even a resolution.
I don't either.
Are they going to continue to advocate?
Well, I think, I think that it's been on there.
Yeah.
This isn't a first year they've done it, it just hasn't been passed, I guess.
Right, maybe, yeah.
So.
Hopefully, history will be pizza toast.
I say, we, when it comes, I mean, unless we want to take a vote, I don't know how it would turn out.
Yeah, I I think the reality is, what we vote won't matter because the question will have been decided.
Yeah.
Right.
So I say, I would abstain from voting on question, or resolution one, and then vote the way.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
I I I agree on one, I I think for resolution three, I disagree. I think that we probably, you know, some of the adjective or verbs there is, like, to raise awareness, promote. So there's not actually an action that's being suggested there, but there is data to say that making sure people put their guns away means that they don't then end up in a child's hands.
So, you know, the discussion around that was, you know, Allison started off with that same view and, you know, the idea is it's not really something within the purview of the school. Like, so like, that's not, you know, if we're going to do, like, helmet self safety, for example, Allison used that, like, that's within the purview of school because some of the kids ride their bikes to school. But now we're getting into telling parents what they need to do in their own homes.
Yeah, well, let's say, you know, kids are, I mean, twenty twenty-two, I think, was the highest year for school shootings in recent history, so that does happen in classrooms, not necessarily ours, thank God. But it it does relate to schools because then sometimes they end up in schools.
Well, it's also how more kids die than any other.
Right, the committee has also twice entertained the conversation about Moms Do Made Action, which is the the group that organizes for firearm safety. So that declined twice.
Let's, let's do that, since there's a question on that, let's vote on that separately, right? Is there, are there others that we have a question on?
Nope.
So I'll entertain a motion to move forward to direct the liaison to vote in accordance with what is presented on resolution two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Second, also moved.
Second.
So motion by Allison, seconded by Katrina, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. So on resolution three, the recommendation by the committee is a no vote. Can I get a resolution to accept the committee recommendation as presented?
So moved.
So motion by Sue, seconded by Allison, is there any further discussion? So a yes vote is to accept the no that's here, just to be clear. A no vote is to not accept the no that is here.
No.
So, wait, I didn't call for a vote yet. So any further, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstained.
So we, is that two and two?
It fails. It fails because it's a tie.
Abstain.
So, so then it was a two-two, so I think it fails, a tie is a fail. So, well, no, that's okay, because then the next question is, so then I'll make a, I'll make a motion to move with a yes vote on resolution three.
So, so.
Yeah, you want to second that, Katrina?
Second, yes.
So that, so the the motion on the floor is to change the vote on resolution three from a no vote to a yes vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
So it's the same, so you would abstain.
So we'll abstain.
I just wanted to cover all both the yes and the no.
I would like, I don't know what's happening.
The only other thing there would be a sanction.
And do we need to do that same vote for resolution one?
Yeah, we can do that. So move, move the vote as an extension, because there was not agreement for resolution one.
We can try to vote it.
Oh, we can do that, fine. So let's move with a vote of a yes for resolution one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Allison, seconded by.
So wait a minute, what are we doing?
Katrina, hold on. So a yes vote would make, would say that the committee wants resolution one to be a yes. Right, that that's what the vote is, right? So all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Yeah.
Against? No.
No.
Abstain, so it's a two-two tie, it fails.
Just vote to abstain.
So then, yeah, move, move to, move to instruct the delegate to abstain on resolution one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Allison, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained, it's unanimous, Natalie. Okay, vocational planning.
Sure, so the vocational planning committee met a couple of weeks ago. We had Tom Hickey in from South Shore Tech to kind of give us an update on where their project is, was, and will be. So they have submitted to the MSBA at the end of August, they'll be presenting there in a couple of days, I think it's the end of October. What we talked about, our next steps being was putting together some numbers to present to the committee as far as what the financial implication would be if we were to join. Obviously, but based off of the best information we have possible right now. We talked about bringing that to you either in November or December. Again, we had always been talking about the vote to join, it's a two-piece vote, right? So vote to join and vote to pay for it. And the committee has always kind of been in the same place that those should be happening at the same time, because I don't think, if we ask the community, should we join VOTAC? Everyone would say absolutely, and then six months later, when we ask you to pay for it, they could say no. So they should be together. And we had talked about that potentially being a conversation we would be having in the spring of twenty twenty-five at that time meeting. We are still exploring that as the option. So we'd be giving you all some information in late fall, early winter, and then you all would either choose to move forward and and put it on the warrant or not and the select board could then choose to put it on the warrant if you chose not to, so.
Is there still an appetite for us to join?
Yeah, so the the current members, they're still interested in our interests. I think that what what they are experiencing now, which is a little bit different than what they were experiencing when this conversation first started about a year and a half ago, is that many of their member communities are also facing some of the same financial concerns that we have. So there's some competing interest when a town is voting for a two and a half, proposition two and a half override, as well as a debt exclusion override for a building project. So I think there is some concern, rightfully so, from Tom and some of the member communities, that those are some competing interests that could be syncing up on the same ballot for them. But we will know in January of twenty twenty-five whether enough of the member towns voted to move the project forward. If two-thirds of the member towns vote to move the project forward, even if your town didn't, you're along for the ride. So if you move it forward, you have to pay for it.
And if they don't move it forward, then there probably wouldn't be appetite for us.
Potentially wouldn't be appetite for us because the capacity in the building wouldn't change.
So we'll know in January.
We'll know in January if the project is.
I happened to be at a meeting last night and met the superintendent, it was very weird, I have no idea how I ended, I didn't know he was going to be there. But I have some papers, actually, I've got sales on them, but I have little packets.
Yeah, so I have some too.
Oh, you do?
Allison and Sue have one, he handed one to me.
Awesome, yeah. So one of the things that he mentioned was that it's only, it only has to be like fif, like, one more vote, vote than fifty percent of the total towns in order to pass it.
Correct, it's a cumulative vote of all of the towns, so even if.
Oh, really?
Yeah, even if Hanson, as a town, voted no, as long as fifty-one percent of the membership voted yes.
And one of the other things they said is that when they took in Marshfield last year, they got some sort of like one percent discount. So by take, there is a little bit of, I don't think it's that much money, but there's a little bit of an incentive for taking in.
Yeah, by bringing in another community, and we've talked about this a little bit before, obviously, it lessens the amount of debt that the member communities have to take on. For some communities, that's attractive, for others, that means less seats for their kids. So it's kind of a balancing act, so.
Yeah.
But so we're still exploring, we're putting numbers together, Tom and I were just talking recently about projecting enrollments and making sure I'm using a number that he agrees with the formula on. We will present soon.
I'm curious if the building process is the same as it is, like, here, where here is our pretty nice building, just kidding, we have to shrink it to fit it. Does that happen on school buildings?
No, no, so the MSBA approves a project.
And that's the actual project, it's not like here.
Once the MSBA says yes, and if they're going to give you money, you have to build that.
Yeah, they'll lose the money if they don't, like, literally a hundred and eleven million dollars. Out of a hundred and nineteen for the total cost, so it'd be kind of wild if they said, never mind, lots of millions that they could get.
Okay.
So I just want to tell you, too, the the chamber really wants to do a forum on it at some point, and I'm going to be meeting with them because I'm one of the board members anyways, and on Thursday morning, and I'm just going to tell them we we have to wait until January because we don't have.
Right, so originally, they had asked us about something in November, I just think the timing isn't, doesn't make sense.
They were really pushing for it, like, they wanted to get some sort of an update, but really.
On VOTAC?
On VOTAC, just to see where, you know, like.
The chamber?
Yeah, they like to do the forums, you know, they do the informational forum.
Information forums that they do, but I told them the same thing, so back in, like, September, you know, last year, I'm like, there's nothing that we have to bring forward, right?
Right, right, right.
So I think January is going to be very, it'll be very telling for all of us. We'll actually have some numbers, we'll know what the move forward is, we'll know what the likelihood of us even being accepted is. And then I think we can actually have a discussion about reality as opposed to maybe.
And we'll have our means of entry by then.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe.
So. So VOTAC is never gonna fit into your means of.
No, I know, no, 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 that's, yeah, that's not what I was hoping for.
But we'll know, we'll know what we've gotta do.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll have a better idea.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Of what we have to do to get to a balanced budget, though, yes. Okay, so policy sub, um, sent us for a second read, a list of policies to rescind and recode. So can I get a, a motion to accept for second read and approval, uh, the rescind, recode, and number of policy sections as presented?
So moved, second.
So motion by Allison, seconded by Sue, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, it's unanimous, Natalie. Future meeting things?
I have a quick question, so I know you met with the police, I just wondered if there's an update on that.
Yes, so we did, we had a brief meeting with, um, the chief and deputy chief of police, as well as with, um, the town manager and the chairman of the board of selectmen about communications and protocols around school safety. I'll summarize from what I kind of understood there. I, I don't know that, that there was a clear communication protocol, the working, they did present something of, you know, here's how to handle it, here's what to do. We've asked him to document a clear protocol. The school resource officer is gonna work with Aaron, um, to make sure that that's better understood once that's documented and put in place. And then I think it should be distributed to this committee.
Yeah, we all can talk about it, we talked about having the new school, um, new school resource officer come in when they switch over in November, so I think that would be.
Maybe a December meeting or something?
Yep. So, and I think that'll be good, right? It's also a good way culturally to welcome that person to the, the school community, so I think that's good. So I agree with you, by the way. I also think that, um, I made a commitment a couple of weeks ago, when the young man, um, presented his letter, that we would make that a, a topic of discussion at a future meeting.
Yeah, so I did go to the Papa meeting last week, was it last week? Might have been last week. And it was actually, the eighth.
I remember reading the notes, that's why.
It was actually a, a really great conversation, and I think, um, I know that no parents spoke that night, but I think the, the sentiment that they wanted to get across is that they wanna help us figure it out and they're interested in looking at the things that we're looking into, so we had a great conversation.
Yeah, I think that's good, I mean, I think there were not people that weren't looking for data and information. So I think maybe making it their December meeting, you know, topic, um, would be, uh, would be appropriate. And if we, you know, we got there and folks don't wanna continue with the conversation, that's fine. But we did tell the community we would do that, so I think we should do it. Anything else that's out there?
No, so your next meetings are the twelfth and the nineteenth.
November twelfth.
And November nineteenth.
And November nineteenth. Alright, so hearing nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at nine fourteen PM.
So moved, second.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Allison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, unanimous, Natalie. Thank you.